Good morning, Comanche Nation. This is a special meeting. And so far this fiscal year, we've had two special meetings. Our constitution does call for the minimum of 12. And the reason we're here today is to make sure we can get our budget in time in accordance to our constitution. So this morning, if we could just start out, please, Secretary Treasurer, if you could do a roll call?
Donaghyel Delibot?
Here.
William Nelson Fien?
Here.
Lenora Parker?
Here.
Here.
Okay.
Is June going to join us by livestream?
No, he's there.
Okay. All right, June, can you hear us?
Yes.
Mr. Sobo is viewing by livestream, so we have all seven. Good morning, June. All right. Lenora, if you don't mind, this morning, we do have a legal quorum. If we could, can I call upon you for a prayer? I know you have a brother today that is kind of sick and going to be leaving us.
Yeah.
Kind of early. We've got a lot of folks still have broken pipes. We had one heck of a winter wonderland here in Minnesota Comanche. It was pretty bad. Lenora, if you would, if you could go to our Lord.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for another day, another opportunity to serve you. I pray and ask and believe by faith that you will be with us in this meeting, that you will lead us and guide us by your Holy Spirit, that we may do the service that you've put before us to serve our people. We acknowledge you in everything that we do, and I ask that you be with our people, Lord, that still need help with their homes, Lord, with their heat, that you would just continue to bless our housing and our emergency team to help them. Thank you for every provision that you've made for us, and I thank you for every tribal leader here today, that we may continue to represent our people well and serve you well, give you the praise, and ask that you be with the ones that are sick and the ones that are grieving for the loss of their loved ones. And I pray a special prayer, Lord Jesus, today for my brother, that you would continually keep your hand upon him, Lord, and just bless him today. Bless all our people and bless this meeting, and we thank you for everything, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Well, this morning, I want to give a report of our Comanche Nation gaming. Other than COVID-19 that shut down gaming for about four and a half months, we had a historic snowstorm, ice storm, the average temperature for about five days was about five degrees, and what happened to our flagship, the Red River Casino and Hotel. The water supply from Tillman County going into the southern part of Cotton County comes from Frederick Lake, and that's located by Frederick, Oklahoma. Bubba, did y'all's water come back on yet?
Not yet.
Okay. So what has happened? We were shut down Friday, we were shut down Saturday. Right now, the pumps are active because the Comanche Nation got involved. How do we get involved? We make about $8,000 every 10 minutes at our casino. So we helped out with the city of Frederick, because why? Our biggest business, our flagship, which is 70 cents of every dollar earned, was down. So Comanche Nation Entertainment took it upon themselves to purchase that pump for $8,000. Wow. An $8,000 purchase to make sure that over 55,000 Oklahomans have water. Comanche Nation, once again, the Comanche Nation is a reciprocating back tribe. We're all neighbors in this, and that's the update on Red River. Good to see you, June. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, dang. Comanche Nation, there's your CBC One. God is with us, June, and I'm sure glad to see you.
Yeah.
You got a message for our people?
Yes, I do.
Depend on Jesus, because he's going to get you through. He's going to take us through and help us out. He's brought me here where I'm at right now, and I ain't got nothing to do but good things.
Up God, namasukta, June, thank you. All right, Business Committee, we are going to go to Resolution Number 08-2021. If everybody had looked in the Anadarko paper and the Lawton Constitution, we did present our audit for fiscal year 2020, and that, we have gotten that done, and that will be in your Comanche Nation newsletter for March. Now, by our constitution, that's why this resolution is coming forward, whereas the Comanche Nation constitution directs the Comanche Business Committee to be bound by the Comanche Nation purpose, and whereas the Comanche Nation Business Committee is duly bound to conduct business on behalf of the Comanche Nation, and whereas Comanche Nation Constitution, Article Six, Business Committee, Section Seven, the duties, responsibilities, and authorities of the Business Committee shall include the following. D, to develop annual budgets for the financing of Comanche tribal operations and to present such budgets to the tribal council for final consideration as to adoption or rejection. One, the proposed annual tribal operating budget shall be disseminated to tribal members 45 days prior to the annual meeting. Two, the budget shall be printed on a ballot in such a manner that each line item may be approved or disapproved by the tribal members. Three, the line items of the budget shall be approved or disapproved in the election of officers conducted subsequent to the annual meeting pursuant to Article Seven, Section Two, in which tribal officers are elected. And therefore, be it resolved, the Comanche Business Committee calls for the legal quorum, approval of the proposed 2022 fiscal year budget, and directs the tribal administrator to send out for dissemination to tribal members. Business Committee, if you'll turn that page, you will see the work we have done through our two weeks deliberation of budget hearings, and the way it stands right now, our tax commission contribution will be $3,759,796. Retail wholesale, another historic year, and I want to thank the Tobacco Board for their meeting yesterday. Retail wholesale was never part of the budget, but they are now, and they are contributing If we go right to the gaming contribution, which is covered by our 2005 Comanche Nation Revenue Allocation Plan, 40%, which is elders payment and per capita distribution, that comes to $24,800,000. Tribal government, which is 10% of the revenue allocation plan, comes to $6,200,000. Economic development, which comes at 25%. Under the Comanche Nation Revenue Allocation Plan is $15,500,000. Then it comes to community and education, 25% of our revenue allocation plan, $15,500,000. And of course, we always vote on KCA budget. KCA budget does not come from gaming, it does not come from tax commission, it does not come from any other thing other than leases that the Kiowa, Comanche, and Apache are all in union with. And keep in mind, tribal members, our portion of this is 1/3 of 300,000. So many years, our tribal members thought that we were contributing 275,000 or 300,000. This is 1/3. The Apaches, they bring in 1/3, the Kiowas bring in 1/3. So your total budget this year is $62 million of Comanche Nation Gaming or Comanche Nation Entertainment and Corporation. Our tax supplement contribution is $3,759,796, and retail wholesale is $387,255. This year, Comanche Nation and Comanches watching around the world, your total 2022 budget, which will start on October 1st, 2021, is $66,147,051. Let's give gaming a hand, tax commission, retail wholesale, all you people that worked for us. This morning, I got some coffee over here at Spur, and I'm glad they got a good profit margin on it for us. So I'm so thankful for people that have worked through this pandemic, worked through the pandemic, have dealt with COVID-19 within the house, people calling out, people not showing up. The Comanche Nation and the Business Committee appreciates all your hard work. Business Committee, I bring forward Resolution Number 08-2021. I need somebody to make a motion to approve.
I have discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
I got a question. When we did our hearings, I thought Comanche Nation Gaming told us that they could only do 60,000.
Well, we presented 65 million.
Hold on, I've got another question with that. Are these the same numbers that we okayed during the hearings? Because some of these numbers look different.
Well, I sent this to the TA for what needed to be adjusted.
No, these are not my numbers. And there's been budgets moved from one area to another, and there was a budget reduced after y'all's vote.
Okay. Do you have your budget in?
ECDC was reduced from 600,000 to 525,960 after y'all's vote. I do have my budget right here. Gaming contribution is supposed to be $59,817,476 due to the CFO saying that 60 million would be pushing it this year, but they will do their best to give that contribution. So that's, this is what I sent him, this is not what I received back.
That's what I thought.
When the original numbers were given by the chairman, what was overlooked was the fact that we have some grants, and they're called matching grants, and we have to equal payment to maintain those grants.
You got copies for all of us?
And so Julia had to modify the numbers so that we stayed in compliance with our federal grants. If not, we would have lost our grants. So that's why Julia made those changes.
Well, this isn't going to work, because that's not 25% of the budget you got. If you guys would look at 10%. What's 10% of 59,817,476? What's 10% of that? Somebody better get a calculator. This is your job, Secretary Treasurer. You got an unbalanced budget here. This is all unbalanced. Only thing in balance is the elder payment and per capita payment. That's the only thing in budget. Somebody better get a calculator. Okay, and what is 25% of 59,817,476? We can't send this out to our people like this.
I imputed the numbers that were voted on by the CBC during our budget hearings.
But you got to make them match.
But I also didn't decrease anybody's budget, sir. I went by their vote. I have all their notes here, so when the budget was sent to me, I corrected those numbers, and I sent them back to you.
Well, I hate to tell you this, TA, none of this is 10%, 25%, and 25%. The only thing that's correct is the 40%. I make a motion, we go into executive session. If somebody could claim that motion.
I make the motion to go into executive session.
Need a second?
I second it.
I second it.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll be in executive session, Dustin will come back livestream right after this. I apologize, Comanche Nation, and, you know, I would not be human being if I didn't challenge people that are making us money. Well, I guess in my mind, I challenged our gaming theater to make 62 million, 62 million. Well, challenge denied. Nobody's to blame here. I have an algorithm where I got tired of placing numbers here and there. Do know, the CBC, the CBC, the TA, for about, I don't know, two weeks, we went over every program, every number. So here it is. And I want to thank CBC Number Two, Donaghyel, for looking at the numbers, matching it to what we voted on, and my wishful thinking of 62 million, well, that was a pipe dream. So anyway, the benefactor is still the nation, and our entire budget this year will be $59,817,476. The big number that was placed on tax commission, we got to keep in mind, the tax commission has found new revenue streams, oil and gas has increased, and with the numbers rising at the gas pump, those will rise. We also have Mr. Teedart with Taro, he's finally collecting money on that, but we had a big number for him of 4.3. Well, the realistic number will be $3,985,796. Business Committee Resolution Number 08-2021 still stands. I do need a motion to approve the 2022 revenue allocation budget and proposed budget to our entire nation of 64 million. No, we have to make that change. But on the gaming part, which is really what we have to get done, is $59,817,476. Our tax commission, $3,985,796. Retail wholesale, under second year of being on the budget, $387,255. So can I have a motion to approve the budget for our Comanche Nation people?
I still move.
Thank you, CBC Two. I do need a second.
I second it.
Seconded by Lenora, and seconded by June, coming in livestream via Wichita Falls, Texas.
Yeah.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Let's give the people that have made this possible a hand. Once again, thank you. Forrest, thank you. All right. I'm going to turn this meeting over right now to Jukes, or Robert Comanche, he is our Comanche Nation Law Enforcement Liaison.
He's left right now.
Okay. Anyway, Jukes, if you'll explain it, what they're wanting me to sign, I've got to get approval from the CBC. If you would.
Miss on the tech home vehicles.
Yeah, you might want to talk in there and take your face mask, go up there.
There was a resolution or some paperwork passed later last year, or year before, and it was for all of our tribal police department to take home their vehicles, and it was never voted on. So they was waiting on the chairman's signature. The police department just had a meeting this morning, and they brought the paperwork over, so it's waiting on a motion to be approved, so all the tribal police could take their vehicles home with them.
And right now, they're going through an audit through the Bureau of Indian Affairs. They met all the big shots where our federal money comes from, and the audit is pretty intense. So Robert, if you would, just, you want me to have somebody entertain a motion to pass this, so I sign?
Yes, it'd be fine, if you want to entertain a motion to pass it, we could vote on it.
Okay. Entertain a motion for chairman to sign for Comanche Nation Law Enforcement, any CBC member.
What's it a reference to? I'm sorry, I'm just writing it down for Shandell.
Well, since tribal, Comanche Nation Law Enforcement is underneath the CBC, I believe at one time, somebody wanted them to station all their cars over there, no matter where they're at, they had to drive it back. Honestly, to me, what was discussed in the past was, it's not even my opinion, it's the vote of the CBC. If they want them to park their cars at home, yes or no, really? That's, I don't know. It's up to you guys. Yeah, if anybody has any concerns, you need to bring it up now.
When I was the executive assistant to the CBC, this came forward before, and I think the only issue, the only thing that was brought up previously was if they go on duty and they have a call, they're going to have to drive all the way out here to grab their car and then go to the call. So it was, there was forms in the past that I drafted for the chairman to sign, and the CBC did approve them to take their vehicles home due to those situations, but they are to be staged at home and not driven for pleasure or anything, only for business. So that's the only issue that, that was a question previously when I was, you know, the executive assistant before, that they would, you know, have the ability to just go if they're called in or whatever.
So today, you know, there's all these officers, lieutenants, captains, investigators. I can't sign this unless you guys agree for me to sign, and it's for insurance purposes and docile. You might want to show that to Forrest, Robert.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I think that'd be a, I think that'd be a good deal, as long as, you know, we didn't get nobody out there joyriding, just because they, you know, like our firefighters were doing, hell, it'd be 10:11 o'clock, you see the only dang Comanche fire truck driving around town, 11 o'clock at night.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, but, you know, I don't know, that would be a problem, but I think that's a good deal where those guys have to, don't have to come way out here, and then they can take care of business right there, and it kind of gives us officers in all the tribal areas that are needed, you know, all across Comanche County and wherever, you know, all the little towns, it'll give us, give somebody right there on the, kind of like a Johnny on the spot. I think it's a good deal. If there's discussion, make a motion.
Okay. Attorney Tedanepper, what's your thought, sir? Are you okay?
Yeah, I mean, the documents look good. I mean, this is a matter of policy, I certainly understand, and it's what it says in the documents, that, you know, the reason for the, the, the reason for the policy change would be for people to use the vehicle if they get an emergency call.
Right.
I mean, I think it's up, if they're, you know, I think the concern is like people just abusing it and driving the car around for pleasure, and I think that's up to the chief to supervise. I know, you know, I've had neighbors in the past that have been like state troopers and stuff, and you always see them with their cars parked at home, so I think it's, it's a pretty standard thing in the industry, it seems like, but I do think, obviously, you know, it's on the chief to supervise it closely.
Right.
If we, you know, but it's, it's obviously y'all's decision of what policies to make.
Okay. Any questions from anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I did not get a copy of the agenda for today, but I thought there was only one item that we signed for.
Well, we can put this out for three weeks.
And I think, before we do any further business, that, that, that the, the agenda needs to be modified officially by the CBC, because this special meeting was for one subject, and that was the 22 budget. That's what I signed for. So this, this, this is an example of what we cannot do, we have to follow proper procedure. So if you want to entertain anything new, and I'm not opposed, Robert, to what you're doing, I'm just saying, let's do things right, because it's, it's going to get us in trouble if we don't do things correctly.
I think overspending the people's money by 29 million is doing things wrong. Okay? And that's one thing we haven't done.
I strongly recommend that if you want to do other business.
I got every right to say anything now, I only got two minutes left in office.
To amend the agenda.
I think these were requested over a year ago, so if it, to take it to a regular meeting, I think it'd be necessary. It ain't hurting nothing now, one month ain't going to hurt it.
Well, if you don't mind, Mr. Sobo, could we make a motion to amend our agenda to talk about this and go ahead and act on it now?
Yeah.
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 That way we can be legal, amend, amend our current agenda to address this situation and, and give Mr. John David his moment there. I make that motion.
That recommendation of amending the agenda to include this by Donaghyel Sobo, Number Two. Can I get a second?
I second it.
Seconded by the vice chair. All those in favor to amend, to add about this Comanche Nation Law Enforcement vehicles, please signify by saying aye. please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. So, Robert, you know, you are our Comanche Nation Law Enforcement Liaison. I gave this to you. The main reason I gave it to him, Donna Gill, for you to amend the agenda, they gave it to me, but I surely don't sign anything unless you guys move me. So, if anybody feels like a need to be moved, make that motion.
And I'll second June's motion to act upon this.
All right, June, does your motion still stand?
Yes, sir.
Okay, from Wichita Falls, Texas, and we got a second. All those in favor for me to sign this, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? All right. Well, this portion is done, and as the Secretary Treasurer said, we had one item. We amended another item. So, could somebody entertain a motion to adjourn?
I still move.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor for adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Thank you. This special meeting is over. June, thank you, and Comanche Nation, spring is coming on, annual meeting is coming. So, thank you for your time.
I wanna make an announcement. You ready for it?
Yeah, let's hear it.
I'll be home for Christmas. I'm coming home Sunday. Coming home Sunday. I sold my shares out in the parking lot of Pecan Shed, Wichita Falls. Yeah. I'll be getting out of here Sunday. Looking forward to all you guys, all your prayers, everything. A thousand, a thousand uras. God bless each and every one of y'all. Thank you, guys.